I would like to call to order the June 5, 2018 Lake Mills City Council meeting. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Here.
Mr. Fritsch.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Knippel. And Mr. Foster previously informed staff that he'd be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Okay. Taking us to item number three, correction and approval of regular city council and the work session minutes of May 15, 2018. I do have one addition to the minutes. Mr. Fields did mention in the last meeting and the correspondence that he attended the school board meeting and there was discussion up here at that time that others of us, Mr. Fritsch, myself, and Mr. Fields, and Mr. Foster, all did attend that. So if you could include that in the minutes to show that the four of us were in attendance at that. Were there any other changes, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of both the regular city council and the work session.
I'll move the minute.
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, then call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Under correspondence, would some of you like to mention the correspondence that you received?
Yeah, I received a letter urging consideration of the multi-use facility and it went in and talked a lot about the different benefits that the facility would provide.
Okay, and that letter was from a resident, correct?
Yes.
That was a resident, okay.
I also received three letters on the Rock Lake Activity Center, urging consideration of that. I'm also had a couple of email conversations, one with a gentleman had issues with the planters being right on the curb on Main Street, and made contact with it. I contacted Steve, but those were taken care of because the concrete patching was starting actually that week, so the planters were pulled back. And then also one more on the Prairie issue. And then I did attend the city and the EMS meeting the other night, had a board meeting EMS did with the city. I was able to attend part of that. I was out on a call for EMS, so I only made part of it. And then also had contact with Rob at the parks about some mowing issues around the town, so he was going to address those.
I also received two letters, one from a city resident and one from a town resident. Both of them were encouraging us to take action on the senior center and activity center at Rock Lake Activity Center.
Okay. So I think that takes care of correspondence then. Questions and public comment? The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium.
Katie Otto here from the Lake Mills Main Street Program. I'd like to speak in support of the city sponsoring the CDI grant for Tyranina. That would be council business number B, resolution 1819. I think improving that property would be great for our downtown and it's wonderful that we can have a private sector government investment to fix up a building that definitely needs a lot of work before it can be used.
Thank you for coming. Hi there, Alisa Smith, Director of the Lake Mills Chamber of Commerce. Also speaking on behalf of the entire Chamber of Commerce Board, we are in support also of the redevelopment and the CDI grant because obviously it would be a great thing for downtown to get rid of an old, underutilized drive-thru and turn it into usable space for downtown. We need the space. People are looking for more space and excited that there is someone who has a vision to redo a property that is very difficult to redevelop. So here in support as well, as is the entire board. Thank you.
And if there is no one else to speak at this time, we will close the public comment and move to the city manager's report.
The composting study is continuing at the public works board and Betsy Powers will be continuing to do the presentation there. She's worked up some information on costs and options that are a little bit further along than the initial presentation based on the direction from the public works board, so they'll be at their next meeting. Meeting tomorrow with Patricia Cicero, Brandon Herbert, and Sue Graham about the continuing mill pond dredging work and the study information there. I haven't seen anything from the chief yet on the staffing strategies report. I guess we'll see where that goes. We did meet last night with EMS to discuss issues. Dan and I were there along with three people from EMS. South Main Street is continuing to move along. They're looking at issues related to the bids, so they're looking at sealing the concrete with tar. They're also looking at how they're going to set up stage three because work is probably going to start before school is out and the stage from East Lake Park Place down to Woodland Beach Road, which would be in front of the school there, so they're looking at that. Cleanup along South Main Street is continuing from utilities work, so a lot of the sidewalks are being completed, some of the asphalt's been repaired. I don't think they've done a lot of landscaping, but they have done some. Mulberry Street is continuing to move on. In fact, at your next meeting, we will have the state municipal agreement for the Mulberry Street project. The bid for the electric construction is actually out and bids will be opened on June The street maintenance contracts have been completed and work will probably start next week. You probably noticed the front steps at the library either later this week or early next week, and then a lot of curb and gutter work in the next couple of weeks, and then asphalt will probably start falling behind shortly thereafter. The county highway V sidewalks are done. I don't know if you noticed that along the south side, from the BP all the way out to the end of the cemetery. The bike trail is still under construction because we got a six-month extension thanks to Betsy. They're letting a little bit of that work slide in order to get caught up on some of their other work. Tonight's agenda includes the Crestview Platte. There were some changes to the construction plans from the public works board and the plan commission to tonight based on comments that are issues that I actually picked up while sitting in the plan commission meeting. And you'll also note that as is typical, the developers agreement will be done as soon as that's done by the city attorney, so we'll have that going out. I don't include an escrow for the financial guarantee. The library parking lot probably won't be done until quite a bit later in the year again because city staff is doing some of the base work and I'll take time to get to that point. The consent order for the lead lateral services requires the inspections to be completed by July 1. I don't think that's going to happen, but we haven't gotten our official extension from the DNR yet, even though we've asked. We did have a, what should I call it, a initial written agreement to that extent, but it got removed or pulled back. The radium TOs I have. I remember that you wanted to know, even though we were under a consent order and you wanted to know. So the radium TO is going to be, which is a task order for completing the initial design and study, is $23,000. It's not as bad as I thought it was going to be. We actually did receive our meters, so we'll start installing a lot more of the new water and electric meters here shortly. I believe that the Wallace Park concession stand can be now officially designated as about 98% done. The Lions Club has done a lot to get that up and running now. I think there are just a couple of things that are related to the school district providing Other than that, I don't have anything else. Any questions?
How close are we going to be on the lead laterals at the end of the month for the
If I remember correctly, we have somewhere around 1,700, 1,800 facilities that we should inspect, that we anticipate we need to inspect. We've inspected 700, but 700, 200 and some have had lead services. So you can think we'll probably have another 1,100 to 1,200 properties to inspect.
So we're not quite halfway yet.
Yeah, not halfway. We're about 40%. We might be close to halfway by July 1.
Good, thank you.
Is it just taking a long time to get in to see the properties or?
Yes, a lot of it has to do with scheduling and getting in to do the inspection. Some of it was, you know, a lot of the work was done all by the inspector himself, so he set up the spreadsheets, set up the mailings, took care of all that, and then did follow-up calls and that type of stuff. We actually have someone who's assisting him now, so it's kind of ramped up in the last couple of months, but it's still pretty slow.
And the ones on South Main can't be done at this time?
Well, we can do the inspections.
Yes.
We can do the replacements, or we don't want to do the replacements because...
It's all going to be done in one fell swoop.
Right. Yeah, you don't want to...
Which is better all the way around.
Right. Same on Mulberry. But you'll notice there's still a lot of them going in other places. We'll probably still have another 20 to 30 replacements done this summer, but then we're, other than for Mulberry and South Main Street, the money is pretty much all gone. So we've held, you know, anybody who filed for those two streets, we're holding the money for them, but we got about 120 people that qualified and received money, and I think we probably have 135, 140 that called in looking for funds, so there's some that didn't receive money. So we'll have to, and I'm sure that based on the number that we have out there, we already have 200 and some services that we've identified. You're probably going to get closer to 300, so there'll probably be a pretty large section that will still be looking for some way to get their service replaced.
And of course, you'll let us know if something new comes across for funding?
Yes, it's unlikely that we would move up in the list again for funding because there's so many cities that'll be looking for that, and we were kind of at the forefront of that. Probably what you're going to see is it getting incorporated into our water utility rate probably next year, and then the water utility can pay for a portion of it based on the new state statutes that have come out.
Yeah.
But it's very tight in how that functions. It's not like the grant.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anybody else have questions for Steve before we move on? The remaining houses that still need to be inspected, those don't include any of the houses that were built after lead was no longer permissible, do they?
I think that the date is 1972. Any house built after 1972, we've cut out, so...
Okay.
That's why I said that if we had to do all of them, we'd be up in a, we'd be in a pretty small percentage because I think there are 35, almost 3,500 residences we'd have to inspect, and so we've cut that down to a little under 2,000 based on construction date.
Okay. All right. Item number seven then, acceptance of minutes of the housing authority, March 27, 2018. Housing Authority public hearing on March 27, 2018. The Police and Fire Commission minutes for April 19, 2018, and Planning Commission minutes for April 24, 2018. These minutes will be placed on file. Item eight, council business miscellaneous licenses. We have two tavern operator licenses. Would you read those names for us, please?
Eleni Agalseer and Martin Bantel.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those licenses?
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the two licenses in front of you. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Item number two, well operators license renewal for wingra ready mix. Now, I don't remember doing too many of these. Do we have to just make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, they're typically done in the consent order, which we did with all the other licenses at the last meeting, I believe it was.
Okay.
This one wasn't in in time. It got in a little bit late, so it's just its own item. That's why you don't typically see them.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the license renewal for them?
Shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seena, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, moving on to item B, resolution 1819, authorizing the application for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant. Do you want to take it up from there?
Resolution 18-19, authorizing the city of Lake Mills to apply for a community development investment grant from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Tyranina Properties, Brunns LLC, parcel 24607131322086115 North Main Street.
We should have a motion and a second before we discuss this resolution. I move that we adopt resolution 1819. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Steve, do you want to say anything about this or?
Actually, I'll leave that to Dan.
Oh, Dan, okay, Dan.
Excuse me. You have a memo from C Planner. Have you all reviewed that memo?
Right.
Okay. Do we have specific questions? This is a redevelopment grant for the former Greenwood State Bank Drive-Thru. That was, is known as the Bruins Building. I'll entertain questions if you have it.
If we receive the grant on behalf of Tyranina Burns, or I think that's what it's called, if we receive that grant, is there money from the city that has to also match it?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all. It's a completely state aid, and it is for private development. The money that would come out of the city's pocket is expected to be reimbursed, so like utility fees to connect water to that building, to connect electric to that building, any planning that we'd be involved in, that'll be completely explained in the developers' agreement, which would be between the developer, the private owner, and the city. There is no out-of-pocket cost for the city.
Okay.
It is a matching grant, but all the match is being done by the developers. Correct. And so, yeah, I don't think that we'll actually have any out-of-pocket money either. They or the grant will pay all our costs, except maybe for the initial grant application.
Okay.
What will it be used for?
The money?
No, the developer.
Maybe if they want to talk about it, if you want to open the rules, Tyranina is here. My understanding is that there's an expectation to put commercial space on the bottom floor. It's a three-story building, a three-story building. Commercial space on the bottom floor, office space on the second floor, and then the third floor would be one residence.
Well, I concur with the comments that were made at the beginning of the meeting in public comment, that I'm personally very happy that we have people in the city who have the creativity and the vision to see something that isn't there right now and see what it can be, and I think it'll be an improvement to the downtown.
I think it will be a significant investment worth a lot more than it currently is.
Right, and it also was not a good site for a drive-thru to begin with, being so close to the intersection. So that'll be a good thing too. Any other comments from the council or wishes of the council? Seena, call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, there you go. All right, moving on to item C. Would you read that, please?
Resolution 18-20, action on notice of claim and claim for damages brought by Miranda Whirl Onin for water damage at 610 Mulberry Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
I will entertain a motion on this one.
Shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I guess if there's no other discussion, we take a vote?
Is there discussion?
Based on these letters, is there been any follow-up investigation on their letter? Is that what they thought it was from, is they have a cause of the leakage?
The insurance company has done their investigation, and their findings are that the city is not liable for the claim. I have not been made aware of if the ultimate cause of the damage has ever been actually isolated and identified. The claimant is strenuous, in her opinion, that it was caused by the fire on Franklin Street. I haven't heard that specifically been proved otherwise. It more comes down to even if that is the cause for the flood, the damage in the basement, the opinion of the insurance company is that the city is not liable for it.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
It is unfortunate that that happened, but...
It would have been truly unique if it had been caused by the fire though, because it's the opposite way of the flow of the water. You'd have to anticipate that it had penetrated the sanitary sewer, but if they're the only ones that had damage with all the other basements in the area that are connected to the same sanitary sewer line, it would be, it would be unique, so... But the insurance company just didn't look at it that way. They looked at it and said even if it was from the fire, it wasn't our responsibility.
So, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Item D. Would you read that one, please?
Resolution 18-21, conditional use permit, William and Sheila Westrate Boathouse, 539 West Lake Park Place.
Who's the speaker on this one?
I can speak to this. The Westrates are looking to make some modifications, actually build a new boathouse on their property on South Lake Park Place. It went to the planning commission. It was reviewed based on comments provided by the planner and his memo. They recommended the city council approve it with the conditions noted in the memo. So...
We should probably get a motion on this.
Shall move.
Second.
Now we can have more discussion. Does anybody have questions about it? Are we okay? As you said, it did go to the planning commission and they were satisfied with the accommodations that were made?
Yes, it's, everything is required in the ordinance that we have. It's not really something that's outstanding. The only thing I think that he really was looking at was making sure that the building inspector was notified when the work started. So, but otherwise, I think if I remember correctly, this comes right out of the, right verbatim out of the ordinance that we passed several years ago.
Has the laws governing this boathouses, has that changed recently at all in the last several years?
Not the conditional use part of it. So they didn't have any changes there, and our code still requires, you know, a certain amount of shoreline cover and vision corridors and those types of things. Can they build in the 75, you know, there was a 75-foot setback and never really applied to the city, except for in areas that were recently annexed, which isn't a lot in the city of Lake Mills. That's about the only thing that I know of that's gone away. There are some other types of conditions that aren't, that are much more lax, but most of the things that apply to this haven't changed. You still have erosion control requirements and ordinary high-water permit issues and making sure that there's enough vegetation planted on the, in the setbacks.
Any other questions or comments? Seena, call the roll.
I might note one thing, that the amount of detail provided by the design group was significant, I mean, more than what we would normally see.
So you were very pleased with that?
Plan commission was, yeah, and the planner, because it was easy for him to figure out what was going on.
Well, we appreciate that they did that.
Yep.
Maybe it can set a standard for future people. Call the roll. Call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Moving on. Let's go to our next one. Would you read that one, please?
Resolution 18-22, final plat approval, Crestview Meadows subdivision.
Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for the final plat approval for Crestview Meadows subdivision. We discussed this a little bit at the last meeting. We have several other items on the agenda that have to do with this as well, ordinances that are related, or at least one that is, or am I wrong? Maybe I'm wrong. But anyway. Comments on this one, Steve?
It's consistent with the preliminary plat. The only thing that, that really stood out to me was, you know, we had talked about the stormwater requirements and the parkland requirements, parkland dedication. They paid, they know they have their fees to pay. That's in the developers' agreement. One of the things that got added from the Plan Commission meeting was sidewalk is extended along Brookstone from Crestview up to Lake. So...
It wasn't there at the...
It wasn't in the initial plans. They're kind of small, so, but you can see that the sidewalk got extended from here up to here. So, and then the stormwater drainage was added. It comes down here and then drains around and then into the stormwater, right? Actually, yeah.
Will that be kind of a swale or?
It'll be a swale. It does its work by running it across grass and allowing the sediment to settle out and providing, it provides a little bit of depth before it flows out, slows the water down. So it's a, it's a quantity and a quality control measure.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. And now we move on to our ordinances. Would you read ordinance 1187, please?
Ordinance 1187, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map number six.
I have to make the titles longer so I can get to it. There it is, okay. So this is in its third reading tonight. This is on Highway B. And do we, we made amendments? Did we make amendment to this originally in the first and second reading? No, not on this one?
No, no.
So we just need a motion to approve it as is? Okay, I'll take a motion if anybody would like to make one.
Shall move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, I would call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, moving on. Item G, would you read that one, please?
Ordinance 1188, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map number six.
Okay, and this is the one on Elm Street and Linden Street, also in third reading tonight. I need a motion to approve?
I move adoption of ordinance 1188.
Second.
I have a motion and adoption. Do I have any questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Would you read the next one, please?
Ordinance 1189, amending, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map number six.
Okay. And this is the change on Ferry Drive Milton Street, corner there. We need a motion for third reading on this?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussions be further before we vote? Pretty cut and dry on this one. Okay, you may call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. We had a technical lawyer and location item 11 on our agenda, recommendations for future agendas should have been at this spot where we are now. So I will accept recommendations for future agendas at this time. Does anybody have something they want put on the next agenda? And if not, we'll just do that as it comes in. Anybody have anything? Okay, nothing at this time? That means that we are going to convene into closed session. Would you read item nine, please, from these?
Convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin, Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 sub 1 sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Okay, we need a motion to move into closed session.
I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section 1985 1E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Who would you take the roll?
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, now we are leaving for that, but we will return for the next part of our agenda, which is a special work session meeting regarding the multi-use facility study. So we will leave and come back here. That meeting will not be televised and will not be recorded, but it is open to the public, and people are welcome to attend. We'll see you soon. Out to...